Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency meeting, April 27, 2010. To begin, we'd like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the beautiful floral arrangement they always provide. Roll call, please.
Council and agency member Ibera.
Here.
Council and agency member Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Medina.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Ruane.
Here. I'd like to ask our city clerk, believe it's in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, we do have a few announcements this evening. The annual Operation Clean Sweep event will be held on Saturday, May 1st, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at San Bruno City Park. And the farmer's market will be starting its season beginning this Sunday, May 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. on the San Mateo Avenue. Hope you can all join us. Presentations this evening, we're going to receive a presentation by the San Bruno Park School District representative regarding Day of the Child celebration. And I believe Jennifer Blanco and Kevin Martinez are going to do the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Ruane, council members, city officials, and fellow San Bruno community members, thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of last year's Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, Day of the Child, Day of the Books, Celebration at San Bruno Park, and to preview this year's program on Saturday afternoon, May the 8th. Celebration brought together representatives of each of the schools, the San Bruno Park School District. Preschools from around San Bruno, and at our school sites, Barbara Brooksfort from the library, and our superintendent, Dr. David Hutt. And there was a variety of performing artists of many cultures and free book giveaways to all children. I'd like to take a step back and provide a little background on the Dia concept and take you a bit then through the day. In 1996, children's author Pat Mora linked the annual Mexican celebration of Dia de los Niños, Day of the Child, on April 30th, with a focus on literacy. The first annual celebration occurred in Santa Fe in 1997, and the event was immediately embraced by the American Library Association. Celebration has grown to be known as Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, or simply also known as Dia, and is now observed in hundreds of libraries and schools across the country on or near April the 30th. In the words of the founder, "Dia provides a wonderful opportunity to promote the power of books and reading to change lives for all children. Dia is a daily commitment to link all children to books, languages, and cultures." Our celebration featured greeting each family, providing a program to adults, and a passport to literacy to each child. Each child was encouraged to visit tables from each of the schools and preschools and have their passports stamped. He or she would then present their five stamped passports to the bookmobile and get a free book. We estimated that over 300 books were distributed at last year's celebration. Also, we were able to distribute parenting kits from San Mateo County's First Five Commission in various languages, and throughout the afternoon, families can enjoy multicultural performances and gather onstage for storytelling from the pros. In addition to the literacy and festive focus, the event also warmly introduces young children and families to their neighborhood schools and preschools and to the community resources. At the risk of omitting key contributors, we would like to thank and acknowledge Randy Schwartz, Danielle Brewer, Barbara Brooksfort, and John Alida. Also, we'd like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Alida and Ms. Brooksfort from the library for applying for a grant from the California State Library System SDA Committee to support this year's event. And actually, for this year's event, we've already received 500 books, so we're actually getting optimistic when to go. And we'd like to also extend a general invitation to this year's event on Saturday, May 8th, at the Rotary Pavilion between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. San Bruno is blessed with strong community spirit and joyful family events. So many thanks for letting us introduce this celebration of Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros this evening. I'd also like to introduce my partner.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, Vice Chair, Jennifer Blanco.
Good evening, everyone. It's really, I'm really excited to come to be before you tonight and the rest of the community to speak briefly about Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, Day of the Child, Day of the Books. This will be our second year introducing this program to the community. We're very, very excited to have the celebration in our community. We have a short PowerPoint presentation for you, about two minutes long. We'd like to end our presentation with that. But before we go ahead and get that presentation rolling on for you, a quick rundown on California State Library System. California actually became an official Dia state last year in 2009, so it was a great thing that San Bruno came on board in such a great time. So with that, and with the California State becoming an official Dia state, now they have a Dia committee, which we are able to receive grants, and our library was able to submit a grant, and we received $350. And they have hired someone to do a story card theater presentation at 2:00 at the park that afternoon, and we also received 200 books from that grant. So we will get that presentation rolling for you in just a second. And this concludes our presentation to the City Council and to the community, and we invite City Council to please attend our second annual Day of the Child, Day of the Books, Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros celebration on May 8th from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Rotary Pavilion, and we extend this invitation to the rest of the community who have attended, who attended last year, and we'd like for them to return, and for those who didn't get the opportunity to attend, for them to attend this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to attending. Item number five, review of the agenda. I do have one change, we will be pulling item number 10E, and we will have that presentation for 10E at the next council meeting on May the 11th. Approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting of April 13th, 2010. Changes, errors, omissions? Seeing none, approved and submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. It's your pleasure on the consent calendar.
Yeah, can we pull item 7H?
Okay.
Please.
The balance of the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Item number H is receive report on education and enforcement activities for the 2010 fireworks season. Vice Mayor.
I was just, for the more of the community's sake, I would just like to know if we could have just a brief overview of that. This is obviously, it's coming up. I want the citizens to be assured and know the diligence the staff is taking, once again, to try to provide a safe and happy 4th of July in San Bruno, yet trying to protect, as we put extra staff and education in operation prior to the date.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Medina is correct. This is a pretty routine for San Bruno as far as the public education and outreach to the public. We will be staffing, we will meet with all the vendors. The city clerk has contacted all the vendors for fireworks sales. They will be required to attend a meeting prior to the distribution of the fireworks, and all the sales sites will be inspected and so forth and so on, and we'll also do the public outreach with cable TV, flyers at all the schools, and so forth and so on. So we'd be happy to answer any other questions.
No, and then follow up to the city manager. Can you help explain, I just think for the residents' sake, there's a perceived notion that what is charged at the booth is something derived by the city, that we institute a tax, or we have, we set what that is, or what is charged at the booth. Can you help clarify that and the cost recovery that goes on?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Medina is exactly correct. The city does not participate in or otherwise sponsor or receive direct financial benefit from the sale of fireworks in San Bruno. It is the case that the booths, the booths are operated by community organizations. It is, they use the fireworks sales primarily as a major annual fundraising opportunity for their various community organizational and charitable activities. The city does charge the direct costs of the oversight, public education, and event days management of the allowed use of fireworks in San Bruno, which occurs on the dates of July 4th, I guess, I believe, actually, immediately preceding and ending that evening. So there is a short window of time where the fireworks activity actually occurs in San Bruno. For that occasion, both our police and our fire department staff up, as the chief indicated, so we do incur costs associated both with informing the public ahead of time about safe practices, as well as monitoring and regulating the safe use of fireworks per the city's regulations. All of those direct charges are recovered directly from the fireworks booths, and otherwise the city does not profit or otherwise gain revenue from the sale of fireworks in San Bruno.
Thank you for that information and the update. If there's anything else from the council, I'll go ahead and move to approve item 7H.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, mailed. We don't have any this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act does prohibit the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Anyone in the public like to address the city council? All right. Item number 10, conduct of business. A, receive quarterly investment report from the city treasurer.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, during the first quarter of 2010, the city continued to actively reposition its investment portfolio in accordance with the revisions to the city's investment policy adopted in November of 2008. At quarter end, the city held the following. $8 million in direct obligation of the U.S. government, these securities are held in trust at Union Bank, $10.5 million with the city's account at the local agency investment fund administered by the state treasurer, and $16.7 million in the county pool administered by the San Mateo County Treasurer's Office. Further diversification and additions to the city's portfolio are currently being evaluated, and it is anticipated these purchases will be made by month end, which is, of course, by Friday. April, we saw an influx of approximately $7 million into our county pool account, and as such, we kind of, you know, lag in balancing the portfolio by generally two to three weeks because of the influx. By the early part of May, that will be taken into account. By way of reminding the council, the county treasurer asks us not to withdraw in any one month more than 20% of our balance. That is, they've asked that of all its participants in order to help them better manage their cash flows. So that will be accomplished by, by the end of next week, which will be the first week of May, we'll be able to get improper balance in accordance with our investment policy statement. Now, with respect to the San Mateo County's investment in Lehman Brothers, or I should say the county pool's investment in Lehman Brothers, the latest is as follows. During the first quarter, a meeting was held with Secretary Geithner, along with our congressional delegation, during which it was discussed, under the current TARP legislation, does the Secretary of the Treasury have the authority to reimburse local agencies for their losses? It is the opinion of the secretary that, in fact, they do not have that authority to do so. So as a result, attention is now focusing on using the profits from already repaid TARP funds to purchase the Lehman bonds at par. Currently, those bonds are trading at around 30 cents on the dollar. The idea is to use the repaid TARP funds to purchase the bonds at par, in other words, make the various investment, investors whole, using, again, repaid TARP dollars. In fact, today, our deputy county manager, Mary McMillan, was meeting in Washington to further explore this idea. She was meeting with our congressional delegation, Jackie Speer, Anna Eshu, and others involved in the House Financial Services Committee. As soon as the results of those meetings are made available, I will report them as soon as possible. And lastly, it was reported, we were informed last week, that the San Mateo County Treasurer's Office announced an 8% reduction in the management fees charged to pool participants. This translates into a drop of 12 and 1/2 basis points to 11 and 1/2 basis points, saving the city $1,000 for every million dollars managed by the pool. Is their management fee being reduced to more or less help the, all the participants in their accounts? For us, again, it represents $1,000 for every million dollars managed by the pool. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions of our treasurer? Thanks very much, John. 10B, receive a quarterly financial report as of March 31st, 2010, for the 2009-10 general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, redevelopment agency, and capital improvement program budgets.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and members of the city council. This is a presentation of our quarterly update financial report. Some items of notes, we met this morning with our sales tax consultants, and in reviewing the revenues of this past quarter, it actually is flat compared to a year ago. Transient occupancy taxes have shown some signs of improvements, albeit for the entire year, it's still down compared to a year ago. And lastly, a very significant item for the redevelopment agency, there is a potential grab of $1.99 million that may take effect as on May 10th. This is pending a court ruling that's going to be due on May 4th. By the way, if I can step back, this item is comprehensive in reviewing all the funds, including the redevelopment agency. So my oversight and not clarifying that upfronts. Some other economic data, what the slide shows is, are the unemployment rates both from a macro level and a local level, and as we can tell, looking at the slide, unemployment rates are still very high compared historically, and even compared to a year ago, they are across the board higher than it was just a year ago. So the situation obviously is still a little bit tenuous, even though there may be a recovery, some green shoots. It's still having some impacts on certainly the local government level in terms of our revenue streams. General fund revenues, here, these are the top five revenue categories for the general fund, and as we can tell, looking at where the budget is, the amended budget compared to where we are for the nine months, for sales taxes, we're at $3.3 million compared to the amended budget of $5 million, obviously at around 2/3. There's a little bit of lag time in terms of sales tax, but in looking at, again, in having the conversation with our sales tax consultants this morning, there is a little bit of a positive sign in terms that was flat compared to the prior two quarters, where sales taxes were actually showing declines compared to a year ago. Property taxes, the timing of the property taxes, we get the second installment in April, therefore, the March numbers do not reflect that second installment. VLF is the next category, likewise, the same as property tax, we actually get the second portion of what is called a VLF imbue as part of property tax payments, and therefore, it looks like it's a little distorted there at only the 50% level. And then the last two categories, charges for services and use of money, charges for services, they're right at the 3/4 mark, if I may, and the use of money and property, that's a combination of interest earnings that we have and rentals that we have for the agency.
Can I interrupt?
Yes. Sorry.
With the fact that you stated the lack of reporting, or the lag in reporting, is it safe to compare this year with last year, or is that skewed also?
In terms of each one of these categories?
Yes.
I think it's comparable to, compare them to last year, so yes, that very right column, right-hand column, is the same nine months a year ago. So it gives us a little bit of a basis in seeing where the trends are a year ago versus what we are looking at for the last nine months of the current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at revenues at a departmental level, we have the various departments, starting with PD, engineering, planning, building, recreation, fire, and library, and overall, we're at 70%. There are a couple of departments which are a little bit below, but, you know, overall, I think we're still on track to hit the targets by year end. There's a little bit of catch-ups, a little bit of seasonality involved in some of these revenues. Some of it is because of the accruals, the timing of the revenues, by the time we receive it in April is actually for part of March collections, if I may. So a little bit of accruals that kick into place, that distorts these numbers a little bit. But again, comparing this current, nine years, nine months to last year, 3.2 million, 3.1 million, they're very comparable. Now we go to the general fund expenditures, and these are the various departments, I've kind of ranked them in descending order in terms of budgets, and the storyline on here, if I may, is that overall, the general fund for the city, we're right at the 75% mark, but it still means that we need to be, continue to be diligent in monitoring and controlling our expenses so that we meet the budget targets, the amended budget targets of the 31 million and change there.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes.
Could you go back? Could you explain for those watching, when they see non-departmental at 120%, what that means?
Yes, the non-departmental, what those charges are typically, they get redistributed to the various departments. It's a little bit distorted here, yes, it's $92,000 versus the $77,000. We're looking at about a $15,000 increase compared to the budget. You know, last year was $155,000. I don't have the actual date breakdown of the $92,000, but it's certainly something I will, I will be monitoring, you know, for the next report there.
Thank you.
So moving on to non-general fund, funds, if I may, the redevelopment agency, we have, again, the revenues are the tax increment dollars, therefore, the revenues associated with those come as part of the property tax revenues, and again, they're due in April, so therefore, a little bit of distortion in terms of where we are actually for the first nine months versus the entire budget. The low mod income is a requirement that we set aside 20%, so the same rationale applies in terms of where revenues are. And then we have four major categories of internal service funds, our self-insurance fund, building and facilities maintenance, central garage, and technology. As you can tell, across the board, all of these are at exactly 75%. The reason that is the case is that these are charges to the various departments within general funds, so it's an accounting entry that we do that, you know, basically has a linear apportionment, if I may, of those revenues. And then finally, the four enterprise funds that we have, with the city being the cable TV, the wastewater enterprise fund, the water, and the stormwater enterprise funds. And again, you know, looking at the rightmost column compared to the second column there, they're pretty much comparable to last year's performance. And on the revenue side, we're actually outperforming versus last year, and part of it obviously is because of the rate increase that's, that kicked into effect in the various categories So that concludes the presentation in terms of the quarterly update. I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, the $1.99 million of redevelopment that the state will withhold, I guess, it won't.
Take.
They, they'll keep.
Yes.
How does that affect our, the redevelopment expenditures?
Yeah, it means that there will be less money for redevelopment to provide for economic stimulus.
Yeah.
It's, I think it's been said, you know, publicly by many agencies, the states, in the state's quest for, to balance their budget, what they're doing is really counter to what is really needed, I think, from the perspective that economic development, redevelopment agencies stimulate the economy. It's, you know, public-private partnerships that help generate jobs and growth, but the fact that they're taking monies from agencies really then, you know, reduces our ability to do just that.
But it's not going to, it's not going to affect any of our ongoing programs that are coming up, it's just going to slow down our growth.
Yes, for our agency, yes, there's, there's no impact that actually, you know, means that, you know, programs actually stop or projects actually get stopped.
If I could elaborate on that a little bit, despite the finance director's statements which are correct, this is a serious issue for redevelopment agencies up and down the state and including San Bruno's. We have the unique situation in that the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency is still relatively young, as the agency board is aware. Revenue receipts- Revenue receipts into the redevelopment agency via tax increment have only, within the past about three years, exceeded the costs of operating the agency. So the accumulation of a fund balance, if you will, that is available to provide bigger scale projects is really only beginning to emerge for the city, for the redevelopment agency in San Bruno. As such, it's a future, it limits our future capacity as opposed to being an immediate, because we have, in fact, generated tax increment above those that are necessary for day-to-day operations, and because we have not yet undertaken, as most more mature agencies have undertaken significant larger-scale redevelopment projects. Because we have not yet had the opportunity to do that, we accidentally end up in the situation of not compromising any of those plans already in place. It's our future plans for things like build-out, realization of the dream, that the transit corridors plan, that vision that it is developing, and other similar projects. I just want to make one additional small comment, and that is that, to kind of to add insult to injury, it's, the state is not withholding this from receipts, it's actually, will be required, if the court ruling goes against redevelopment agencies, we'll actually be required to write them a check, which is, kind of adds a little insult to injury.
If I could, let's get off of that subject. It's interesting, I mean, I've never seen the unemployment rates, especially for San Bruno. Is there any more that you can offer as far as what that 8.5% represents?
Yeah, I think the employment development agency scatters statistics, both locally, obviously, and regionally. These are numbers right off of their, you know, I don't know the specific methodology that they use, they employ in calculating that rate for, you know, local agencies. It's my understanding that it's a combination of payroll data and other sources of data that they get, but it's information that's actually available at the employment development website there.
And any indication from your, from your knowledge as to where, what areas of our town are most heavily affected?
I would only, I can only speculate, but I really don't have any solid data that's, you know, pinpoints geographically within the city, what areas are most impacted by the unemployment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I know you were saying on May 4th, going back to the topic we wanted to get off, on May 4th, that there'll be a ruling from the court, and obviously, it's already been ruled once that they couldn't take the money, and the mayor and I went to a meeting in Foster City with the Assemblyman Hill and somebody from the Budget Office, but the impartial, and they weren't counting on it, but they weren't saying it wasn't going to happen or isn't, that's not up to them, of course. My concern is, obviously, if they do lose, and they don't get to take our 1.9 and everybody else's, and I was talking to a colleague down south, and they basically are going to have to write them more money than what they have in the account, so it's unfortunate. But if they don't, I wonder what the state may have to do to come back to balance their budget. So I know in your report, you're very optimistic about, hopefully, there's no more takeaways, but based on May 4th, to me, could be good and bad, and it'll be hard to predict. But I'm also wondering how you see us with the, on June 30th, when that date comes up, which will be here before we know it, how we're going to look as far as the budget is concerned, as far as coming out in a plus, even though I know we're working on reductions in staffing components, but how do you perceive us varying on June 30th as far as the overall budget once it's done and set?
Yeah, I feel relatively comfortable, obviously, we have two-plus months still to go, I feel relatively comfortable that we'll be able to hit the revised budget numbers that has been, you know, presented to city council. There's, again, you know, a little bit of green shoots out there that indicates that, you know, some improvement. I think the construction industry is still very problematic, you know, development and construction, revenues relating to that, planning and building vis-à-vis, is going to be, continue to be challenged. Retail sales, because San Bruno is so heavily reliant on retail sales, the fact that, you know, there's been, you know, some sense of improvement there leads me to believe that, you know, maybe the worst is behind us, that we'll see some positive stabilization, I wouldn't say growth yet, you know, for that area. We also see, as I indicated earlier, some positive trends in terms of TOT. We have, obviously, you know, with the passage back in November of the increase of the TOT tax by two percentage points, that's going to help. So, you know, some positive signs which, you know, are steering me to the belief that we will be able to hit the amended budget targets.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ed? All right, thank you very much. Item 10C, adopt a resolution approving the third quarter budget amendment for 2009-10 general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and capital improvement program budget.
Thank you. This item is, on a quarterly basis, staff typically summarizes all of the budget adjustments that were discussed during the previous quarter, and for the third quarter, the biggest piece, if I may, is really the adjustments as it relates to the, I have a spelling error there, sorry, the deficit reduction strategy.
It doesn't count if you catch it.
Thank you. But this is really a summary of the components of that budget reduction strategy. We have a combination of revenue increases, then there are some non-operating transfers, which is basically the middle section, and some expense reductions. So the combination of these three really are the major components that make up that strategy that was discussed back in February with the city council.
Any question?
So, sorry. So over and above that, besides the general fund adjustments, we also have other appropriations that affect other funds, and included are the general fund reserves, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the next item there. And we have the equipment reserve fund, and then the Park and Lou fees as it relates to the tot lot and the synthetic grass field for Lyons Field, two funding sources there, both the Park and Lou fees and the Parks and Facility capital project funds, we're tapped for funding there. And then lastly, the wastewater capital projects fund as it relates to the Crestwood sewer pump, the $12,500. So that summarizes the past quarter's adjustments for our various budgets there. So I'll take any questions relating to the budget amendments.
Any questions? We've been through most of this already.
Maybe I missed something, but there's $500,000 in appropriations for Catawba Lot and Lyons Field.
Yes.
I know we just appropriated, last meeting, 200,000, you know, for a study. Catawba Lot was roughly 50,000, wasn't it?
It was 50,000.
And I know there's been improvements, other improvements to Lyons Field, but I don't think, is it to the tune of another 250,000?
That's what I have, let me double check, if I may, please.
I can answer that question. The additional amounts are newly appropriated by the city council within, the Catawba was a few months ago, the Lyons Field was recently, these are, these have only occurred during this last quarter. Amounts that were previously earmarked and have been appropriated for Lyons Field occurred in the previous budget cycle, so this is a new appropriation. Does that answer the question?
I think with the council members-
It's in there twice.
Two funding sources, that being the in-lou fees and the capital project fund.
But it's for 500,000?
No, that's incorrect. There's only one appropriation of 250 total. Sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Right, yeah.
The money is coming from the Park and Lou fee fund.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, it's coming from the Park and Lou fee fund and then going into the capital project fund, and maybe that's where the duplicate is.
Okay, so there's only to be one 250?
Yes, there's one 250.
Yes, that's correct, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, yes. Only one time.
Okay, that's clear.
Any more questions? Action?
What do you need?
Need to introduce the resolution?
If there's no questions, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruin.
Aye. Item number D, receive report on development of a policy for maintenance and use of general fund and equipment replacement reserves and fiscal year 2010-11 budget preparation. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's two parts to this report, and I am going to ask the finance director to begin with the report on the proposed reserve policies, and then I will complete the report with the update on the budget preparation process.
So I want to talk about the development of the reserve policy. Back in February, at a study session and then at a regular city council meeting, staff discussed with the city council revenue shortfalls for the current year and strategies for addressing that. As part of the conversation, the city council requested that the staff develop and recommended policy on the use of both the general fund reserves and also the equipment replacement The general fund reserves really serves a couple of purposes. They really fulfill primarily a working capital need. That is to say, there is some cyclical elements in terms of our revenue streams, and having a reserve that provides working capital really allows us to cover the cash flow needs. So for instance, we talked a little bit about property taxes. We get primarily two payments of property taxes, that being in December and April, and so those revenues obviously are a very substantial piece of the revenue stream for the city, and whereas the expenditures, for most part, such as salaries, are fixed costs that are recurring. So the reserve fund provides for the working capital need for that. It also provides protection for any type of disaster, and also helps the city protect its creditworthiness. Rating agencies, for instance, will look at the balance sheet of a city and an agency and see where they are in terms of assets and/or fund balances, which includes reserves. And having a reserves is important in the eyes of these credit agencies such as S&amp;P. It's especially important if we were to go out to the bond market and issue debts as relates, for instance, to redevelopment. In looking at the thought of developing this reserve policy, a number of different elements need to be considered, and some of those, we point out as part of the attachment A, which talks about, well, what is the correct amount that is appropriate? Part of managing reserves is really controlling risks. How much risk is an agency willing to take in moderating or controlling or minimizing risks? Other consideration is, you know, what is the appropriate level of these reserve balances? And in looking at the various elements there, as I indicated, one of them is cash flow, the other one is expenditures, and, you know, what part of our expenditures have some degree of flexibility versus not, and I would submit that in most cases, cities have pretty fixed expenditures. That is to say that most of our costs are labor costs, and therefore, the salaries and wages that we pay are really an ongoing, recurring type of expenditures that we incur. The other element that we need to consider, being in the Bay Area, obviously, our potential for disasters there, and obviously, the one that comes closest to mind is potential of a severe earthquake. And lastly, we touched upon it earlier, in terms of the state takeaway for redevelopment agency funds, what is our relationship with the state who have certain abilities to potentially take monies from local agencies? So that's always a concern for us as an agency and any other agency as they think about developing a reserve policy. So in looking at a general fund reserve policy, we looked up, for instance, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, and they actually have a recommendation as part of their, I'm sorry, part of the best practices, and that is to say that their recommendation is that agencies keep a minimum of two months of either annual revenues or annual expenditures. We happen to pick annual expenditures because they're more constant, certainly given, especially where we are in terms of what happened with the recession, with the cyclical nature of revenues, that those being sensitive to economic conditions, whereas expenditures are more predictable. So from our perspective, using expenditures as the base for the calculation would be appropriate. And from our perspective, staff is recommending that we adopt the same recommendation that is given by the GFOA, that is to say, again, two months of expenditures as the minimum level for the general fund reserve. That two months works out in terms of percentages, 16 and two-thirds percent. So the recommendation for staff is that we adopt the policy of reserving the 16 points, 16 and two-thirds percent of our general fund expenditures for the general fund reserve. Next, we want to talk about the reserve for equipment replacement, sorry.
Is there a dollar, do you have a dollar amount for that, just for comparison?
Yes, so, yes, the general fund reserve currently has a balance of about 5.585 million dollars. Mathematically, if we take the general fund expenditures, do the calculation, it works out to be about 5.246 million, so we're a little bit above that minimum that we're recommending, about 300,000 and change above that level for the general fund reserve.
Okay.
So in looking at the other reserve, that is the capital equipment reserve, the background on that was that this was actually for the purpose of providing replacements of our capital assets, that being our equipment. And monies have been added to the fund really as part of the general fund budgeting process. Every year, we charge specific departments based on the assets they own into this equipment reserve with the goal of having those funds available as the, these assets hit their end-of-life cycle, or potentially, if there's obsolescence, there's monies there, they're available to replace these funds. And over the course of, you know, these years in which we've accumulated this money, we're projecting that by the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have 5.4 million dollars as a balance in the equipment replacement reserve fund. In looking at what is an appropriate level for this particular reserve fund, we looked at what the value of our assets are, what is the cost of all these equipments that we own at the city? And look, then doing that analysis, we identified that there's 8.2 million dollars of value sitting in our books, if I may, sitting in the city. And we think that, given where the reserve level is and the value of these assets, the funding level is about 65%. You know, mathematically calculating that, it works out to be 65%. So we think that a 50% level would be sufficient to meet our needs. What that 50% level obviously is telling us- What that 50 percent level obviously is telling us is that practically every two years, you know, we have, we are able to replace these assets. I mean, you know, if we have assets of a million dollars and we have, you know, for our hypothetical example, and we have 500,000 dollars, obviously, we can replace, on average, about half of those assets on any given year. So with that thought in mind, staff is recommending that we set a level for the equipment replacement reserve to this 50 percent level and we believe that this is, you know, sufficient to meet the needs, the ongoing needs of the city in terms of replacing its assets and still be able to have the funding necessary as working capital and as a reserve to meet those requirements. So with that said, with city council's consideration, if this is, if this recommendation is something that city council feels comfortable with, then we would incorporate this as part of the budget document that will be presented to you in June and so that this policy becomes really a component of that budget adoption process.
To the city manager, so what you said, Ed, is that we have, all things being equal, if you cut it off today, about 300,000 dollars more than what the policy you're recommending has in the general fund.
That is correct.
And about 1.3 million dollars more in the equipment reserve.
That is correct.
So what happens with that, just gets drawn down until we reach those levels that we've agreed on or?
I would not recommend that your policy allow only for the maintenance of a minimum balance, particularly in the general fund reserve. As the finance director has outlined and maybe did not absolutely emphasize is that the policy parameter would be for the maintenance of a minimum balance at 16 and two-thirds percent of general fund operating expenditures. The amount that you identify as a cushion, 300,000 dollars or so, is a very minimal amount above the minimum and I would certainly not recommend that the city council consider simply utilizing that money just because it exists. You would certainly strive to have a reserve balance that would exceed the minimum at all times and one which would provide the necessary level of comfort for the city council based, as some of the materials attached to the staff report identify, that really your assessment of what amount constitutes the necessary level of reserves at any given time is really as much a level of comfort and understanding of your own risk tolerance and preference and priority for this individual city. We're recommending the 16 and two-thirds percent or the availability of two months worth of resources as a minimum balance. And I would say that we would not be seeking to engage a discussion about how to utilize excess reserve funds until and unless you had a substantial exceedance of that amount of several hundred thousand dollars more than what you have. Conversely, if the city council felt that it was prudent and that expenditures were necessary in that amount above the floor, if you will, you have that little bit of cushion or opportunity to address one-time expenditures, other operating contingencies, and you do have a little bit of flexibility. I hope that answers the question.
Oh yeah, I wasn't going to get into any discussion on how to spend excess money, but there's other entities around that very well might, you know, so I just want it brought up because I, you know, think as a minimum, 16 point something percent as a minimum is a minimum. This risk-taking stuff, I get very conservative with playing around with that in our environment now and it's too dangerous to keep small amounts of funds there just as a balance and keep your fingers crossed, I'd much rather have a cushion.
If I might, I would make some additional comments regarding the equipment reserve. And as the finance director has indicated, there is a recommendation for your consideration that would set the minimum balance in the equipment reserve at an amount which is substantially less than the amount that is currently identified as a balance in the fund. As the city council is aware, there is approximately 3 million dollars of a receivable that is comprising a portion of that existing fund balance. That receivable is from the redevelopment agency and was utilized as the startup costs for the agency over a number of years when it was immediately after its formation. The comments regarding the general fund notwithstanding, I would say that the annual deposits into the equipment reserve, the expenditure history and the asset value being protected by the equipment reserve or the equipment replacement fund does indicate that it may be an opportunity to consider adjustment of the transfers in on an annual or a continuing basis or, and/or, as we've discussed and as you're going to hear in just a moment, strategic use of that receivable to offset general fund operating budget or other considerations. So again, those are opportunities, they are not, I think you need to have a level of comfort with your policy with respect to reserves and the situation of each of these, both the fund balance as well as the need for reservation of funds is that there are some differences between these two resources.
Can you also explain, and that's very clear for the growth of the capital reserve, the equipment reserve, can you explain the potential growth of the general fund reserve? And how does that grow or is it flat, is it stagnant right now?
Typically, historically, the city has grown the general fund reserve with the deposit of otherwise undesignedated, generally unanticipated, one-time resources, unbudgeted, unanticipated, undesignedated resources. And as the council, I believe, is aware, the general fund reserve has grown from virtually nothing about 10 years ago to a position of relative health over the past decade essentially with that strategy. That would generally continue to be the approach that staff would envision utilizing unless the city council provided alternative direction.
To the chair.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
My first question is going to be, do you believe if this recommendation were to go forward on the equipment reserve specifically, would staff have a thought or view of utilizing some of that for the shortfall in the 210-211 budget? Or is that a thought that's come across someone's mind?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and answer that question because in view of the finance director's limited exposure to our previous conversations and to our, having jumped in at the middle of the stream with our budget preparation process, the answer to that question is yes. The staff has previously discussed with the city council that note receivable from the redevelopment agency and the potential of utilizing some amount of resources on a repayment basis from the redevelopment agency as one of several strategies to address the current year and next year's general fund operating budget shortfall.
You know, going to the general reserve, we want to, staff wants to recommend 5.246 or 16.34. You know, the director talked about a concern of an earthquake. I want to talk about a concern of a mudslide, like what I went down the hill with the public works director at Madison. Doesn't take much for that to be gone. To me, this is the emergency. This is what we have in the savings account to address disasters or, as staff will call it, the one-time since we were short in this last budget cycle. And I'm going to say it again, one time here, one time there, to me, becomes one time everywhere. Okay? So I don't know that that's enough. I would really be interested to see the other cities within our county that have a policy. I'd like to see what their percentage, what they're set at. I would like to see exactly what's in their reserve account. And let's have a comparison, let's go apples to apples here. I like those type of reports rather than this third-party recommendation. I want to see it firsthand from our neighboring communities and within this county, what they're doing. Maybe we'll find this is a great process and this is what everybody has adopted. You know, I understand on the equipment reserve, because that would give about a 1.3 million, I think the director said, that's a lot of money. But if I'm not mistaken, we've stopped accruing for the equipment reserve. We've either limited it or we've stopped accruing.
That is actually not correct.
So the departments have, when we would have so much be accrued for the equipment reserve, we have never reduced the amount that's gone into that account?
Each year, the required contribution is calculated based on the useful life and the value of the assets reserved. I believe that there was one year in which, as a budget strategy, we reduced the transfer in in consideration of the overall health of the reserve fund and the, or the equipment replacement fund and the limited, or at that point, no need to further increase the fund. However, it is continuing practice of the city to charge each of the departments, the current year's budget and next year's budget as it's being developed, include a transfer in to the equipment reserve.
Okay, so never been stopped, it may have been lessened at a point.
At one point it was, yes.
Okay, and I know we've also tried to stretch the length of a vehicle, trying to make sure we can get the extra gear out of it, the extra 10,000, 20,000 miles or what have you. I just, and I understand there's all accounting to everything, but you know, when you accrue less at one time or another, when we do the length of the equipment and we see that out, I just get concerned that, you know, eventually things come up to get you in the end. You know, you only could put something off so long and all of a sudden, we don't just need one, we need several because we have waited and we've tried to do our due diligence. I can tell you, reserves is a subject for myself that I have a great deal of concern. I have a concern that we would be looking at reserves in order to balance a budget coming up. And I don't think that's how you start out to balance your budget in 210-211. In my world, however you want to differentiate them, but using savings in order to balance your annual expenditures out of your house. That's not the way to plan a budget in my mind. I think we have to look at the reality of what is, if this is one of the objectives. I understand it's a mechanism, but I do understand that this is not, to me, not the best avenue to go down to explore a million, we'll say, from the equipment in order to put it to the fund, the general fund, in order to balance a budget, if that's somewhat of the intent. So I do have some concerns on this practice.
To the chair, I just want to comment on that. I think, I think a few of us were on this council and we didn't have a reserve and I think, I don't think we had a major concern at that point. I think we had things in place and that, and we were more concerned about the growth and improvement of the community and master plans and things and as it came, you know, these reserves grew. But I believe that we should have, you know, in this time and eight years of budget cutting and things, that we have to know where we stand in every asset, in every account. And I'm not saying, I would not go forward and say, let's, you know, sit at the bare minimum, at the minimum on these accounts and then use that money towards balancing a budget, but I think it's something that we should consider. I feel very strongly that if having to decide on a percentage of the reserve versus an employee, I might lean towards a reserve, so.
And I agree with you, councilmember.
That's what I feel, is that I don't have any preconceived notions to what to use with this money, whether it's 1.3 million or whether it's a quarter of a million. So, that clarify?
Michael. To the chair. Couple of thoughts. The supporting documentation that was provided to us did state that two months is minimum, that the recommendation is that that be the absolute minimum. But I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that we're recommending the minimum, but there's not a lot of substance behind why the minimum would be appropriate in our case. And what I was hoping to see was maybe a little bit more analysis in terms of, say, we experienced a disaster in the area, what would the city be responsible for? I know that there's insurance on some properties that the city owns, but you know, what would the city be responsible for in terms of repair? Would we incur large expenses in repairing streets, damage to private property? I don't know what that exposure is. And you know, the two months is better than having no guidelines at all, but I think I'd be a lot more comfortable if we were to have some real numbers that say, here is a scenario and here is what we could be on the hook for. Also in terms of possible lawsuits that come up, I know that's something else that we would probably have, we're not budgeting for that. So at least theoretically, what could our exposure be in a situation like that versus just going with the minimum? Regarding the equipment reserves, the supporting information said that lifespan of equipment is roughly five to 10 years. So looking at that, I mean, if we were to replace everything every five years, 20 percent a year, I think would kind of get you into that thing. I don't know if 50 percent is high or low. It almost seems, I don't know, it's definitely been growing, there was enough there to launch amounts, maybe that number is high. My, I guess first a question is what equipment is included in that and is there a potential to add either equipment that's not currently considered or possibly improvements to our equipment and plants that we could include in that reserve that isn't currently included? And by that, I would, you know, improvements to city hall, maybe some upgrades to our parks that wouldn't normally be budgeted but could possibly be accounted for in there. Not necessarily capital improvement projects, but things that might be more maintenance that we could take advantage of, doing upgrades in that. So that's something I'd want to see considered before we agree to bringing that amount down.
Get an example?
I don't know, say, you know, I know there's a lot, a lot of our facilities are really old and generally, I mean, when we talk about fixing one of our buildings, that's a capital project, but I'm wondering if there weren't some opportunity to incrementally fix some things in there that we could account for as, I don't know, more maintenance rather than capital projects if we were to actually put money aside to do those things. I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense, but... And the other comment I had was, just in terms of the... And the other comment I had was, just in terms of the enforceability of having this policy in place, I mean, I don't know how rigid of a rule this would be. I think the language in there was kind of, we would strongly recommend not doing this, but I don't know if we would want to do something a little bit more firm, that, you know, that it won't happen unless certain conditions are met. And then the conditions that were also outlined in the policy seemed a little bit too general, maybe a little vague, so we could maybe put a little bit more language around what conditions would have to be met in order for that to, in order for the reserves to be used. I think that might also be useful.
Couple of questions and comments. First of all, I agree with just about everything that's been said. I feel that two months is, is too conservative for me. When you say you figure the worth of what we have, is that to replace?
No, that's at the cost, the purchase cost. So yes, your point is well taken. The replacement cost may be different than the...
Maybe quite a bit different, right.
Yes. So that therefore, the 50% is really the cushion that we're kind of building, building into the reserve policy to provide for the fact that there's going to be some inflationary component of replacing these assets.
Okay. I would also like to see a better, I understand the GFOA, you know, independent, and they do their thing, and it might be a blanket, but it certainly doesn't cover everybody. I'd like to see more of a contemporary comparison of, as the Vice Mayor said, our, our neighbors, neighboring communities that, of a, of a similar, maybe geographical nature, those kinds of things. Because I was on this council when we ended up spending millions on slides and buying homes and relocating people because we weren't covered, and we had to spend a ton of money, and it just goes out the door in a second. So I just think a two-month, you know, reserve policy at a minimum is, is just not enough.
Yeah. Finally, I'm just going to say I'm, I'm one who would wish and think that we should be more frugal and put, I would love to see us at the end of a budget time, say, you know what? We not only just balanced, we came out in the black. Because maybe we, we said the revenues were going to be here, but they became here, and that's a good thing. But I don't want us to rely on reserves as a way to balance the budget. I don't want it to be utilized or looked at, whether it's by staff, or bargaining units, or by the general public to say, but you've got the money there. According to your own policy, you've got a million dollars. That pays for it. That's not the way in my world to prepare a budget. Let's talk the reality of what we have, what expenditures we have. If we're short, we're short, and let's say how much. But that's the way I'd like to see us go on a budget, and I'm just concerned that this tool or policy could be utilized by others to show that, based on your own policy, you have extra reserves, so put those toward that. And again, you keep doing that, and keep doing that, and there will come a time, maybe not while I'm up here. But I think, as, as the mayor indicated, there was a time he sat up here, and the money wasn't there. And that, to me, I don't want to sit up here and have that time come.
So to staff, what do you need from us now? Do you have some direction?
Let me suggest what we heard, and what you would like us to come back with, and I guess what I would reiterate is, we weren't asking for any type of action tonight. Our approach would be to return to the City Council with a draft policy for your final review and approval in conjunction with the budget presentation process. So we have some time in between to check back in with you. And what I heard you say that you'd like to see as additional information, first is what other cities in the county, in Sematyo County, have reserve policies, and if so, what do those policies, what are those policies? Secondly, related to comparison with other cities in the county, you're interested in their reserve balances. And we have some of that information, we will certainly update that and present that to you. You also asked for some, I'm going to say, some examples or some assessment of the types of particularly disaster-related risk that the city might be exposed to. I would suggest that we can give you some example scenarios, one perhaps from our own experience of the slide losses that turned out not to be covered by insurance or FEMA as we had anticipated. So we, perhaps we can develop some generic types of examples. I think the range of those examples might actually be unlimited, but we can, we can certainly bring you back some information on that. Next, you asked for information, a list of the assets that are reserved in the equipment reserve, in the equipment replacement fund, and consideration, and I would suggest some information about what would be involved in including additional capital items, as an example, in the reserve or the replacement program. So those are the things that I heard that you wanted back as specific information. My suggestion is that we bring that back to you end of May time period, in order that you have that information and can engage in additional discussion prior to consideration of a policy. And we'll, we'll be prepared to discuss that with you again.
Can you have a comment?
If I can add to that, and I know we didn't hear from the city attorney, but if there is, if there's a section of that, or if there's a dialogue in that, in this litigious society that we should probably have, you know, a percentage as far as for litigation...
Litigation.
...to make her feel comfortable.
Also, regarding the budget, it is coming up, and what we have done in past sessions is set some dates, so we can have some study sessions prior to, you know, voting on the budget. So I'd like to suggest, what we've done before is three dates, usually gets done in two, and a third is kind of a backup. So I have a suggestion of June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, or the 7th, 9th, and 10th. Maybe you could look on your calendars and see if that would work for you.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to jump on this one, because I know, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd is most appropriate for me.
Okay.
I will not be able to attend, I will not be able to attend on the 7th, on the 9th. Yeah.
I think I'm okay with that.
I'm okay for 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
Rico?
As it stands right this moment, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd would work.
Okay. 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of June.
June, I'm sorry.
Is that the council's preference at this point? 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, or would you like us to check back with you?
Well, you might want to check with Irene, when you can.
Good idea. We'll confirm that with you at the next meeting.
Oh, she's gone, no, we, she's gone.
We confirm for her?
We confirm for her.
Okay. We, we will bring that back as an action item at your next meeting, so both for your scheduling convenience, as well as for public information.
Yeah, great. Item E, we pulled, and will be presented on the next, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we've, we've kind of consolidated an additional important item into this agenda topic, and I'd like to move on to part two, if you would entertain that. This part of the presentation is intended to give you an update, as the council previously This part of the presentation gives you an update on the budget development process. As the City Council will recall, we've already discussed the preparation of the 10-11 budget on a couple of previous occasions with the City Council. Most notably, at your February 10th and February 26th meetings, we advised you of the mid-year financial status. We discussed with you strategies to address the current year budget, and we gave you projections for the revenue situation, as we then anticipated it going into 10-11, what, what we anticipated in the way of revenues for the coming year. And in summary, the status of the current year's budget required an adjustment of 1.3 million dollars in order that we could reasonably project that we would end the current year with a balanced budget. As the Finance Director reported to you tonight, based on the third quarter results and the amendments that the City Council has now made to the current year's budget, we do anticipate ending the current 9-10 fiscal year in balance, as it relates to the amended budget, and based on the previously adopted budget deficit elimination strategies approved by the City I'm also pleased, relatively pleased, to report to you tonight that our projections presented to you in the previous meetings in February remain on track in terms of our anticipated revenue situation for fiscal year 10-11. I will remind the City Council that that was actually not the case, as we worked last year at this time to prepare the current year's budget. And in fact, having had a very similar situation of startling midterm results requiring adjustment mid-year last year, we projected a revenue situation going into fiscal year 9-10 that then again needed to be adjusted downward in April of 2009, as we moved closer and closer towards presentation of a preliminary budget for your consideration. Again, I'm relatively pleased, compared to a situation that might have existed, to report to you tonight, that we have not, during the ensuing time period, as we've progressed on developing the budget for 10-11, we have not identified a similar situation. In other words, our projections remain, as best we can anticipate, on track with what we told you in February. In summary, we are anticipating a relatively flat revenue situation going into 9, going into 10-11, as compared to the amended budget for 9-10. And what you see on the slide in front of you is, and we're calling the 10-11 working budget, it's essentially pre-preliminary budget, because I don't want you to try and pick this up and compare it to the budget that you'll get in late May for your consideration in June, because we're really not yet done with it. But based on our progress to date, our major revenue categories remain relatively flat. There is an anticipated slight improvement over the current year in sales tax, although in general terms, that, that really nets out against additional declines in other revenues. But overall, our revenue situation remains as we previously reported it to you, with no major changes overall. There are, there continue to be a number of issues and some assumptions that have been built into our projection of expenditures for the coming year. Most particularly, as the council is aware, we have contractual obligations related to personnel costs, in particular, the PERS rate, which is going up by a modest amount this year, but also contractual obligations to merit-related increases for personnel. As the council is aware, no other, across the board, salary increases were provided this year, and our assumption remains the same. As we have projected expenditures for the next year's budget, we are anticipating continuation of all existing personnel expenditure containment and reduction strategies that were incorporated into the current year budget. Most particularly, the continuation of a furlough currently at the level of six days annual, or representing a 2.3% reduction in salary for personnel. The, in addition, our budget is built around an assumption of no increase in the premium cost for medical, and we've showed you the amounts of, of the costs associated, were those items not to be successfully negotiated with our bargaining units, and as the council is aware, both of those items are subject to the negotiations process, and all six of our bargaining units have contracts which have either recently expired, or which will expire on June 30th. So that remains an issue somewhat unknown, but I think we've been very clear, both with our labor representatives, and as well as with our employee base generally, that the budget assumptions and the ability to balance the budget and, and maintain a reasonable level of service relies absolutely on these cost containment strategies continuing. Next, the budget, an additional item that has been built into the budget is continuation of a scrutiny to all line items, and in fact, a reduction of approximately $150,000 in line item expenditures as compared to the current year budget. So that exercise, or that diligence has been exercised in producing the expenditure side of the budget for fiscal year 10-11. I'm sorry that I've gotten the slides just a little bit out of order, so I beg your indulgence in our jumping around just a little bit. In summary, the fiscal situation impacting or defining next year's budget, as it is currently situated, continues, as I indicated to you before, the same basic parameters of the amount of the deficit, and I'm going to repeat, in some aspects, information that you've heard before about the strategies that we are anticipating being utilized in balancing the budget. First, as you see, there is an approximate $2 million deficit, if you will. That amount is comparable to the situation in the current year, as I mentioned before, in that there were one-time resources used to balance the current year budget, straight from the get-go, and there was an additional $1.3 million of changes that occurred mid-year. Those two amounts add to a total of $2 million, and that $2 million deficit number continues to next year. We have previously presented to you a program, a preliminary program of personnel reductions equating to seven and a half additional positions being eliminated at the total value of approximately $760,000. We are continuing to propose, as we have discussed with the City Council previously, the use of redevelopment agency payback currently due to the equipment reserve or the equipment replacement fund of $400,000, and the excess ERAF amount that we have been receiving for the past several years, when property taxes are reconciled by the county tax collector, of $500,000. This year, that same amount, $500,000 of excess ERAF funds were utilized to balance the budget, and in fact, the total amount of the excess ERAF collections was just over $700,000. So that amount is, again, an estimate of the amount that we would expect to receive, but is a, I would say, a reasonably conservative estimate. In summary, then, what you see at the bottom of the page is about $370,000, $378,000 of additional changes, reductions to the budget that need to be incorporated. And as I have indicated to you previously, it is my expectation that that change needs to come out of personnel expenditure. it is my expectation that that change needs to come out of personnel expenditures. And I will come back to that in just a moment. In summary, what we are proposing is a budget that is utilizing these three basic strategies to balance the budget. Additional expenditure reductions, additional permanent expenditure reductions, continued the practice of the current year for a repayment amount from the redevelopment agency loan to the Equipment Replacement Fund and the use of excess ERAF. When we last discussed the budget preparation with the City Council in March, our specific agenda item was to brief you on preliminary personnel reductions that would be incorporated in the budget. And my primary purpose tonight is just to revisit those with you and to, again, refresh your memory regarding the anticipated service impacts, which are on the next couple of slides, and we'll review those very briefly. The total amount of savings from the permanent elimination of the seven and a half positions is $763,000. Again, there is a fairly lengthy list of projected service impacts which we've provided for your information and consideration about the, what the public will see and what services are likely not to be able to be performed going forward and/or would require some restructuring or reduction in the frequency or the timeliness of the service. The, in summary, at the current time, our working budget projects $31.3 million in expenditures. And, if you could go to the next slide. The proposal, in addition to the personnel reductions that have already been discussed with the Council and those which will be necessary to balance the remaining $370,000 of shortfall, in addition to that, the, I've provided you a summary of the net effect of a $400,000 redevelopment agency loan repayment and the resulting impact to the city's Equipment Replacement Fund. As you can see, the, and as we've just discussed with you a moment ago, the total note receivable and cash balance leave a total Equipment Reserve Fund balance of just over $5.8 million. There is a scheduled and budgeted transfer in for '09-'10 of $424,000 and proposed equipment purchases of $549,000. The proposed loan repayment and transfer of that amount into the General Fund operating budget of $400,000 would leave, as of July 1st, an approximate Equipment Reserve Fund balance of $5.3 million, including the remaining note receivable. As I indicated, personnel reductions are the necessary result of our meeting your specific direction to deliver a balanced budget. Personnel, as the City Council is well aware, represents approximately 70 percent of our General Fund operating budget expenditures. And I wanted to summarize for you, primarily in order to gain any direction or comment that the City Council might have, summarize for you the areas and the impact, if you will, of the additional personnel reductions that will need to be made in fiscal year '10-'11. As the Council is aware, we currently employ 167 and a half, approximately 168 employees that are funded, at least in part, through the General Fund. That includes our elected officials yourselves, as well as the elected treasurer and city clerk. Of those positions, roughly 20 full-time equivalents, and these are pieces of many different positions, but full-time equivalent of 20 positions are funded by allocations from the enterprise funds for, and those positions are primarily in our general administrative areas of the city, our finance, city manager, city attorney, HR operations. That represents a revenue into the General Fund to support roughly 20 full-time equivalent positions. During our previous discussions, the City Council has expressed an interest and a priority for the maintenance of frontline public safety response and prevention activities, taking only the first-line, frontline responders. And this is primarily limited to our sworn safety staff in both the fire and the police departments at 84 and a half positions. Netting out those, the, those that are, what is funded by allocations from the enterprise funds and frontline sworn safety positions, we end up with 63 General Fund positions over which at least the majority, if not virtually all of the position eliminations, will occur. As Council is aware, that includes the broad range of services from parks maintenance, recreation services, community development services, as well as, of course, our safety operations. 63 positions now have, will be eliminated, will be reducing by seven and a half positions. And I'm anticipating, in order to meet the revenue shortfall and in order to balance the budget, I'm anticipating an additional three to four positions will need to be eliminated, those positions, because I've exhausted my opportunity to utilize vacant positions or reorganization. It will be necessary at this point to move to layoff of approximately three to four positions for a total elimination of 10 to 11 positions in affecting fiscal year '10-'11 to be implemented within the next two months and available then to give the full opportunity to, for those costs to be reduced out of the budget and to be, allow us to present you a balanced budget for your approval prior to June 30th. So that concludes my report. The Finance Director and I remain available for any questions.
Any questions? I won't say thank you, but it's not pretty, not pretty at all. Okay, we pulled Item E. We have the next council meeting. And Item F is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for shared recreation supervisor services between the cities of Burlingame and San Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. The city of Burlingame is losing the services of the supervisor of their aquatics programs. The Burlingame Parks Recreation Staff has approached the city of San Bruno's staff with requests to share our aquatics recreation supervisor, Jenny Tucker, from approximately May 1st until the middle of August. The city of Burlingame plans to contract out their aquatics programs with the Burlingame Aquatics Club. However, it will take the club a few months to get ready to take over that operation. So they are asking us essentially to step in as a bridge and to share the services of our aquatics professional. During this time, Jenny would be splitting her duties evenly between the two cities. In Burlingame, she would be working exclusively on aquatics programs. In San Bruno, she would be working on the aquatics programs, the summer programs, as well as some of her other normally assigned duties. The city of Burlingame would be paying the city of San Bruno approximately $10,000 to $15,000. As of yet, we do not have specific dates, which is why there's a little bit of ambiguity over the exact dollar figures. But once we figure it out, they will be paying for one-half of the fully loaded cost of Jenny's salary and benefits to the city of San Bruno. Besides the revenue coming into the city, we think there are a few other benefits. One is the benefit to Jenny's professional development. This will give Jenny the opportunity, similar to what we have done in previous years through the Management Talent Exchange Program, where people from one agency get to try a different position in another agency. Jenny would have the opportunity to learn another operational method. And she would also be in charge of a couple of program coordinators. This would, this would be experiences that she can bring back to San Bruno and to put into practice here. Other full-time staff, other part-time staff within San Bruno's operation will have the opportunity to learn more about the supervision of aquatics programs as they help to cover for Jenny's duties while she is away from the city. Finally, as the cities and county, as the cities throughout the county and throughout the country are discussing win-win operations of shared services, we believe that this will give an opportunity for both the city of San Bruno and for Burlingame to explore the benefits and the logistics of a shared services arrangement in a fairly short-duration setting. So the proposal for you tonight is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. Just one question. I understand that it's an approximate amount because you're not sure the date yet from Burlingame. But you say there may be an additional $1,000 to $2,000 for aquatic costs for other staff to assist during the supervisor's absence. Why cannot, since we're not 100 percent certain, because we don't know the length of time, how come those duties or responsibilities can't be done by the current mid-management staff that's already at the recreation facility?
Summer is a little bit of a high season for us. And we can cover some of the routine duties, such as some of the classes. Jenny's duties, such as the e-newsletter, will get shifted over to the library staff, as an example, or our Facebook, Twitter accounts. So some of those things will get shifted over. But some of the on-pool supervision management-type things, when we want to have more eyes, not just looking over the pool, that's going to happen, but looking over the operation to make sure that the schedules are in place, that the parents are notified, that the report cards for the students in those programs are made up. Those are the types of things-
We heard you. We heard both of you. Thank you.
Those are the types of duties that will be handled by the part-time staff, as well as all the safety things that you already heard.
You had to plug that, of course.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Just a comment. It seems like not a whole lot of money that the city would get, but I thought this was a pretty creative way to bring a little bit more funding into the city and, you know, possibly help save some jobs somewhere else down the line by just sharing where we can. So I think it's a great idea.
Having said that, would you like to introduce-
I would like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Buing.
Aye. Item number 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees, none tonight. Item 12, comments from council members. We are going to receive an oral report from Councilmember Ibera regarding council members' attendance at the annual Samhain County Progress Seminar.
Somewhat of a segue. For many years, the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce and the Samhain County Chamber of Commerce, and supported by many Chamber of Commerces in Samhain County, have a, the Progress Seminar or a retreat in Monterey. And it's a full day, it was a full Saturday, of various sessions that happen to be important or of major interest in the county. Over 200 attendees from elected officials and numerous agencies to nonprofits and to actual large corporations. Just to give you a brief idea, the subject matter was shared services, the banking environment, education, and this was, the education topic was more bang for less buck, and social media, and then the ever-present subject about water, water rights and water preservation. Our very own city manager was on the panel in the shared services, and it was a well-attended, probably the most popular topic. And interestingly enough, even though our experience is well-known in the county, there were also a lot of discussions about shared services within the community with the school districts. And, you know, not just sharing of, or combining, not necessarily merging agencies, but sharing just like what we just experienced here with Burlingame. But let me just say that social media is exploding. And that topic, when we talk about Facebook and Twitter, that is the trend. And it's interesting how a year, what a year makes that everyone's sitting in a large room and they're all on their BlackBerries. So I'm behind in the times in that. But I think probably the most promising there was the subject on banking, and I thought I might fall asleep through that. But banking, the bankers said that there is a definite positive trend happening, is that there is money. Wells Fargo, now the largest banking institution, says that they are, they are doing loans and they are, they still try to call themselves a community bank. And things are happening. There is a little friction as far as with the regulators in allowing loans to go through, but I think those will get worked out. But I think for the most part, they had a lot of good news. So I think it was a very productive session. We got to talk with many of our colleagues and things. And yes, amongst the topics was high-speed rail and how San Bruno is well-positioned with that and how the other communities are sweating through it. So for the most part, it was a fun and very nice weekend.
City Manager.
If I could just add for a moment, primarily for the purpose of the record, two city council members attended this event, Councilmember Ibera and Councilmember O'Connell. The report that the council member just provided serves to represent the attendance of both of those council members as required by law.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. I think that's it. I did neglect to mention that Councilwoman O'Connell is not with us tonight with notice. So she's, she told us. We have Item 13 with you, which is a closed session. We have two items. Item A is a closed session for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel regarding pending claims, Sanchez versus City of San Bruno, EEOC Charge Number 555-2008-00809, Government Code Section 54956.9A. And closed session, Item B, closed session for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel regarding, in the matter of the city of San Bruno, Complaint Number R2-2010-0004, Administrative Civil Liability filed before California Regional Water Quality Control Board, San Francisco Bay Region, February 16, 2010, California Government Code 54956.9A. And I don't believe there's any reportable, anything reportable coming out of this. So we will see you at the next regular city council meeting, which will be held right here at the Senior Center, May 11, 2010. Meeting adjourned.